All right, welcome everyone. I am Richie Ratzek, Assistant Managing Editor at The Record Journal, back with another of the candidate forums today. Now, we're talking with the Meriden City Council at-large candidates. We've got a pretty good group here, joined by Democratic Party candidates Bruce Fontanella and Chad Cardillo, candidates cross endorsed by the Republican and with the People Parties, or Dan Zabrowski and Ray Allet, and independent candidates Ernestine Holloway and Pedro Valentin. So the format, like the other format reforms that we've had, each candidate will get one minute opening statement, then we ask a series of questions, and both and all the candidates will get one minute to respond. We'll alternate who answers first, and if you need additional time, try to hold off on that because we have so many people, but be mindful of each other's time so that we can try to get to as many questions as possible. And questions for the forum came, some came from the newsroom, but many came from our Voices Initiative, where we asked voters what they want the candidates to be talking about as they compete for votes. So you can submit questions for upcoming candidate forums by going to myrecordjournal.com/voices. And for those watching live on Facebook, I'll also be keeping an eye on the comments. So if you have a question for the candidates, leave it in the comment section, and we'll try to get to it as time allows. During the last one, I heard it sounded clear that there were some technical issues with some of the video feed going to Facebook. We are recording this as well. It'll be on myrecordjournal.com. After the facts, you can view it there as well if the feed to Facebook isn't working out all right. So, thanks all the candidates for joining us. We talked about this just before going live, and we're going to be going in ballot order. So we'll start off with opening statements, starting off with Bruce Fonten.
Should I start?
You go right ahead.
My name is Bruce A. Fontanella, and I'm running for a second term for the city council at large. My goals are to continue with the progress and successes we made during the last four years in the following three areas. First, continue our success in setting budgets without increasing the mill rate and cutting services, as we did in the last three years. Second, continue with a special focus on economic development, particularly in attracting new businesses and manufacturing industries to Meriden. Third, and most important, is to continue our support for public safety. We've hired a new chief who has brought enthusiasm, a fresh outlook, and new leadership to the department. We also funded the department's requests, fully funded the department's request during the budget-setting season. Finally, despite Republican opposition, the city council just recently approved the settlement of the police contract with the police union. Thank you.
And then next, we'll move over to Dan Zabrowski.
Good evening. My name is Dan Zabrowski. I've lived in Meriden almost all my life. I took, for the four years I spent in the service, and I'd like to thank Eric, Rick, and Mike tonight for hosting this. Again, my goals in the city of Meriden is to bring back a little more responsibility, transparency, and everything else that goes along with a better government. I feel that I've attended a lot of meetings. I just don't go to one. I go to many of them. And I find myself sitting there, just kind of like shaking my head. Why is this happening? Why is this happening? Why is that happening? And my, again, my goal is to be on this council, be able to have a voice, be able to speak my piece as I go to these meetings, and I get no answers. I want people to come to me and say, well, could I get an answer? And this is exactly the way this council should run. We should be able to give the public answers to any questions, no matter at what time or whatever. Thank you.
All right, Ernestine.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, Record Journal, for having us here tonight, despite of all the difficulties. I want to say thank you to the citizens of Meriden for listening to this. The reason why I want to sit at the table is because Meriden has had a lot of bad business deals, especially with the mills. You know, we spent all that money when somebody wanted to buy it. We should have just sold it to them. We'd have been 30 million out of the red. I don't like the fact that we bought the hospital, we're paying, taxpayers paying for the cleanup. We shouldn't have to. They dirty that ground. They should be the one that's cleaning it up. I don't feel that the taxpayer should foot that bill. I feel that the hospital should foot the bill. It's their mess. They should clean it up. I love the police chief and what he's doing. This is one that I could support, but we need to support this as a whole. I think that we can do better. And if we work as a team, we can achieve better.
All right, and then over to Chad.
Good evening. My name is Chad Cardillo. I'm proud to work every day as a city councillor for you since May. A public educator at Maloney High School, and also a community volunteer, including my service on the board of Girls Inc. in Meriden. The team that I was able to join into is working every single day to ensure that the great successes that have happened in Meriden over the past decade continue to happen. Economic development is increasing in the city. One of my other priorities is to work on continuing to improve public recreation space and equal access to that. Make sure that people have a place to go, get out in nature, and be able to enjoy, you know, the great areas that we have in this city. And I, you know, transparency, I hear in every single public meeting that we go to, we have to make sure that people are able to trust the government that we have, trust the public servants that are working in this city, and make sure that they can get the answers they need to when they need to. Thank you.
All right, and then next over to Ray.
Hi, I'm Ray Allet. I'm a 25-year veteran of the Meriden Police Department. I am on the Board of Education, pension board as well. I'm a proud father of two grandchildren, beautiful grandchildren. I'm passionate about this town. I actually was born and raised here. I never left. I actually love the people. I love this town. It's been, seems like we've been stagnant for so long, and we're kind of tired of hearing, you know, economic development is improving. It's improving. I think I've kind of heard that for the last 25 years. Just because we bring a Popeye's in doesn't mean that it's a cure-all. I believe we need to still focus, be more aggressive on our economic development, support our police department. You're going to hear probably a lot of positives from me with the police department, rightfully so. Because public safety is very important. If you don't have public safety, what do you have? Thank you.
Okay, and then over to Pedro.
Thank you for having me here tonight. It's a pleasure. As a rookie, I am going to ring with a lot of veterans. They know this business very well. But what I bring, what I bring is, I was, I was brought here in 1970. I've been here 51 years. I was through a teen, my teenage, and through high school, and I've seen all the benefits that I have had back in the 70s, 80s, and 90s, and I'm running because I would like to make a difference in Meriden. There's a lot, a lot, a lot of things happening, you know, of the streets that I was raised in. I see them now, how they are. The neighborhoods have been left behind. There's, there's beautiful on one side, and there's the downfall on the other side. I'm an organizer for the Latino Expo. I'm the organizer, the president of it. And as I, as I had the experience, then I'll try to do the best I can. Thank you. I'm so sure.
All right. So thank you to all the candidates for the opening statements. Now, we'll turn it over to Record Journal reporter Mike Gagni, who'll be asking the questions. And then the first question will go to Dan.
Dan, good evening. So last month, the city settled a three-year wrongful termination lawsuit filed by his former city manager, Guy Scape. The settlement out there was $705,000, which was covered by city insurance. The city council at the time of Scape's firing cited escalating discord in city hall. Meanwhile, Scape had claimed discrimination and retaliation by the council. And in the lawsuit that he filed, he mentioned discovering questionable expenses and overcharges. Based on what you know about the allegations and the facts in this matter, do you think settling was the appropriate course of action here? And please explain your answer.
In my opinion, I haven't talked to Guy Scape, but I would never let this thing go. I would have gone further with it because there's so many improprieties that happened during that whole ordeal. The sad part is, this democratic council voted to give this man a raise, and then they turned around because he was finding out through finance, through economic development, through many other offices within the building, there was impropriety. And how do you, you know, again, how do you give a man a raise and tell him, great job and everything else, and then just turn around and fire him? And I just feel for Guy Scape because of the simple fact, he was railroaded onto here. He did a lot of good things. One of the good things I asked him about, how come the Meriden Housing Authority was getting free privilege to go down to our transfer station? And he delved into it. He gave him a cease and desist order and told him, you will no longer get a free ride from the city of Meriden.
All right, Ernestine.
First of all, I want to say the city didn't do their homework. Had they did their homework about Guy Scape, they wouldn't have hired him. They would have went over to Cromwell where he was, and if not Cromwell, the other town over, and found out why they let him go. So what they said was, thank you for hiring our headache. Then they would have went upstate New York, excuse me, they would have went to Vermont or wherever he was, and found out that he went into a union hall and tried to intimidate the people. So had we done our homework, we wouldn't have got him. And see, that's something that Meriden doesn't do. You know, and plus, he didn't like children. He didn't want to do anything for children, and he spent $3 million of money that we got from EverSource that we could have paid down the then he took the lights out from up underneath the highway, and he dimmed them, put dimmers, so when women come through there, it's really unsafe. So, and then he put on these phones that half of the people can't use. They should have fired him. They shouldn't even hire him.
All right, then over to Chad.
So I was not serving on the council when this occurred, so my knowledge is really limited as far as, you know, the inner workings of what was going on. But, you know, like I've been reading in the, in the paper and everything else, Ernestine has a good point as far as some of this is concerned. It appears that, you know, when he was in Meriden, this wasn't a one-time thing. And I really do think that the settlement was in the city's best interest. We don't want to get ourselves involved in lawsuits where we don't know where civil penalties might go. And if we were able to work through our insurance agency and the amount of money that the taxpayers actually had to pay in order to settle this was extremely low to none, then I think that was the best thing for the city to do.
Then over to Ray.
Yeah, Guy Scape, I think they should have looked a little more into what he was doing, but he uncovered a lot of things. He would, I guess, from what I understand, they were, the city was overcharging for health insurance. I don't know the final figures, and that became a cease and desist, like Dan said also. Sometimes you just have to take it on the chin and get the right answers instead of settling for the insurance to cover the deductible to get rid of this guy. He was given a raise, and then X amount of months later, a year later, they, the Democrats voted him across the board to walk away. We paid him $705,000 for what, a mistake? I think it should have been addressed. I think we should have fought it a little more. Probably leave it at that. Thank you.
All right, and then over to Pedro.
Yes, I'm, I'm not aware of that, of that, but I agree with what Ernestine said. And Meriden should really focus, like Ernie said, Ernestine said, focus before you put somebody like that on a position of that magnitude. So I strongly, strongly, strongly agree with Ernestine the points that she made across, and she made them very clear and very strong. She's absolutely right. So that's how I started learning a lot of things.
All right, and then over to Bruce.
I'm going to join the crowd and say, I also agree with Ernestine. I'll also join the crowd with Chad and say that I wasn't on the council at the time. He was hired, and my first meeting was when he was fired, so I had no knowledge of what, of what the, of what the underlying causes were for his dismissal. I will say though, in any event, he was hired by the unanimous consent of the city council. And that, at the time he was discharged and the lawsuit was started as a lawyer, the whole process of the system is to settle cases. And we got caught, the city got caught up in the settlement of the case where the insurance company makes, agrees to fund the settlement offer. And if we went to trial and lost, and the damages exceeded the settlement offer, then the city itself would have been on the hook for that difference between the settlement offer and the damages which, which were claimed to be in the seven figures. Thank you.
All right, and then move on to the next question, which would go to Ernestine.
Ernestine, the city of Meriden has already received a portion of more than 36.3 million in federal funds through the American Rescue Plan Act in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Those funds come with stipulations attached, stressing the negative impacts caused by public health emergency, investing in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, premium pay for essential workers, and replacing lost public sector revenue. A committee tasked with recommending use of funds has begun reviewing applications for proposed initiatives to be funded through the ARP. What types of initiatives would you prioritize?
I'd like for them to fix downtown so it wouldn't flood. Get the right people in there that know what they're doing. People have suffered. Figure out what we can do to bring youth activity downtown because the youth suffered during this. They had no place to go. Bring the children into the parks. They couldn't go into the parks because everything was tied up and bring some fresh newness to it. I think that we need to fix our pavement, our roads, because they suck. People are tearing up their cars, and the city is getting sued. So we need to fix that. We need to go downtown and not only beautify the train station, but that whole area where we lost businesses because the stores wasn't open, the restaurants wasn't open. So maybe some of that money can go to them to help them in economic development to get up on their feet.
All right, and then over to Chad.
Thank you. So this is a great question about the ARP funding. I'm really actually happy that Meriden set up the committee the way it did. We saw in West Haven that, you know, there were some ways that other towns set up the way that they put out their money that were not transparent. And this is a great way for us to show, you know, the taxpayers exactly what we are doing with this funding. I absolutely think that we should be putting some premium pay in for those who are on the front lines working during this pandemic, police officers, the firefighters, our health department, because they did not stop answering the calls, even though there was a global pandemic going on. I think a lot of things that could happen as far as preparations possibly should a pandemic happen again, like increasing ventilation in some of our public buildings, and making sure that we're keeping public health and, excuse me, keeping public health at the forefront in this. The reason this money came in was because of the public health crisis, and we need to fix the issues related to that that came from this. Thank you.
All right, and then over to Ray.
I'll start off obviously with public safety. Been doing this for so long, I understand. And I kind of appreciate and respect, I almost agree with everybody, what everybody's saying. Public safety is important. You have to understand when COVID hit, you know, public safety never stopped. And we, our schedules were moved to 12 hours, and we continuously worked nonstop, nonstop, nonstop. But it also created different problems that we need to address also. You know, the shootings, the rampant crime that just continuously happens here. So yeah, I'd like to see, you know, money be given to public safety, fire department, medical personnel also. Also, I think we haven't discussed it, but our seniors are very important to us, to me at least. That senior center needs some work. It needs a new location. I say we try to fund that or help them out along the way also. And of course, infrastructure. Yeah, everybody talks about the flooding downtown. There are quick fixes that can stop the rains until the majority of it is fixed. But that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Then next over to Pedro.
Okay, I'm so, I'm so happy that they got this money in. Now, we can, we can fix the west side, the west side, which is, has been forgotten. Neighborhoods, on streets, the east side, part of the east side. Also, because I'm a school bus driver, and I do all the runs through all these areas. And you see a beautiful side of Meriden and the downside of Meriden, and brings programs for the kids, for summer program, which I attended when, back in my time. And the police is very important. The police is very, very important because I have people here running in the streets. I'm a bus driver 80 miles an hour. And, and the police is not around. I'm asking myself why police is not around. And supermarkets, we only got one. I just got one supermarket. We need more business to bring here. Have an open house. Bring them in, ask them what they need, so we can, we can, we can put it in place. And more things, wish I have more time.
All right, thanks Pedro. And then over to Bruce.
I'm, I'm really excited about the ARP funds. And I'm particularly excited that the city council went ahead and set up a committee that's going to, to which proposals are made. And then the committee will vet those proposals and make suggestions for the city council to determine as a whole. This gives a professional edge to the whole process. I am also interested in projects that are investments in the future rather than one-time payments for a one-time benefit. So the H, the replace the HV system in city hall really, really excites me because that's, that has a long-term effect and would, and would save this, the annual budget from appropriating funds for that repair. I would be against any premium pays made to policemen or firefighters because that's their job, and they're well-paid to do that job. And I would expect that they, that they did, as they did, would perform that job without any expectation of any extra pay. That also, thank you.
All right, and then over to Dan.
Yes, with that ARP money, I attended the very first meeting. I thought they kind of got everything, you know, pretty much together. But then all of a sudden, $274,000 comes into that money. And it's for the IT specialist. There was a format to do this. It seems like our city manager circumvented that. Last meeting I attended, it was told that, and through my gag me under the bus, is the fact that they got 25 applications. Never saw that application. Matter of fact, the city manager tabled it. But again, the most important thing in this city is we owe our seniors a new building. I have proposed this since Matt Domino left the council. I said, get them out of downtown. They do not need to be there. They should be in a building where they can have outside activity. And that money would be well-spent in the city of Meriden because these people paid their taxes and paid their dues to the city of Meriden. Thank you.
To the next question, which would go to Chad.
Chad, on this topic of funding, let's talk about education funding for a minute. State data for people expenditure shows the Meriden Public Schools has among the lowest expenditures among its neighboring school districts. And the state's expenditures also rank fairly low when compared to districts of similar size and when compared to all districts statewide. Would you support increased funding for Meriden Public Schools?
So I absolutely would support increased funding. And I'm not saying that only because I'm a teacher. I would not benefit in any sort of way from that. So I just want to take that off the table immediately. The reason that I say that is because Meriden is lucky that it has great relationships with a lot of organizations where we're able to get grant money. But sustainable funding from the city and from the state that is dependable year after year after year is exactly what we need. We need to make sure that teachers know exactly what, you know, is coming at them as far as how we're looking at curriculum. We need to make sure that the students know that they're going to have some sort of dependable information coming at them as well. You know, we got a lot of technology that came to us during the pandemic, which was great. We were able to make sure that students had laptops and access to the internet. But we need to make sure also that the city is doing its part to make sure that we're keeping our future bright. Thank you.
All right, and then over to Ray.
Education. The city of Meriden has given little to no extra funding or increases for the last 12 years. We have to survive based on federal grant money, money from the, obviously from the government, people like Dalio Foundation, Nellie Mae, and other functions. That's how we're able to continuously address the educational process. We are ranked 167 out of 169 districts for the city, for what we spend per child. Let me rephrase that. 167 out of 169. And, but our scores keep climbing. We have great teachers. We have a great staff. We have great leaders that really take educational very seriously. Because children are our future. Let's face it. So that's, I'll leave that at that. Thank you.
All right, and then over to Pedro.
Yes, I'm, I'm a school bus driver. So I get to see how everything has changed in the years. And our children, our kids, high school, middle school, and elementary, they're a future for this, for this town and for the future of the United States. Because as you can see, we have, we, we got somebody that made it all the way to Washington DC. It's because we have to have the education in front of everything because they're a future, and that's an honor to be a school bus driver, to drive kids. They're, they're growing. Their, 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 their goals are met. But now with, with this extra help that we can give them, you know, with all this money that's came in, it's our future. It's going to be the bright future for Meriden. And I know, working together, we can, we can get it done, and that's our future.
All right, and then over to Bruce.
I'm, I'm a former member of the Board of Ed for 12 years, back in the 80s and 90s. And as Ray knows, that the, the budget for this, for the, for the Board of Ed is set, is determined by the Board of Ed. And then it presents that budget request to the city council. As a member of the Board of Ed, I always advocated for a larger budget to be presented to the city council. As a city council member, I'm really proud that we never, we always met the budget request from the Board of Ed since I've been on the board, since I've been on the city council. However, being 167 out of 169 is unacceptable. And I would encourage the Board of Ed to sharpen its pencil and present a budget request that meets the needs that it has to get out of that 167 spot. Thank you.
All right, and then over to Dan.
Being educated in Meriden, knowing what the teachers go through when I was growing up as a kid and teenager, I do appreciate the fact that they are taking this time. They are pushing as much as they can. And again, I am one of them that does want to push for education in the city of Meriden. My grandparents, as well as my parents, they paid taxes to bring this up. But I think really, in regards to the Board of Education, I think our economic growth is what we definitely need. So now we can say, here, we can give this to you, Mr. Benetton. Here, teachers, you have no worries. And again, these kids need an education. Absolutely. I, again, as I said, I was educated in Meriden, and I did well through my life. I was very fortunate that I had good teachers. It showed me the right way. You know, sometimes we were like rowdy kids, but I mean, otherwise, they were really great teachers. And our education system in Meriden is phenomenal.
Then Ernestine.
Well, this is what I'm going to say. Attending all those city council meetings, working for the Board of Education, not for Hampton and New York City. What I will say, 167 is the saddest thing I've ever heard. I think also, I need the Board of Ed to be transparent. Come to the, come to the table and say, this is what we're getting per student, and this is what everybody else is doing. You know, we sugarcoat it. These are our future. The, the children with autism are getting shafted. The teachers don't get paid enough. If the pandemic didn't teach us anything, it should have taught us to respect our teachers and respect them a little bit more because y'all was teaching y'all kids. So parents Because y'all was teaching y'all kids. So parents, I urge you to come together, come down to the city, to the city meetings and fight for the teachers and fight for the Board of Ed. If that's what you believe in, then let's do this together.
All right, Mike, go to the next question, which would be for Ray.
Ray, in the upcoming term, one of the first action items the council will take up is a vote regarding establishing a civilian review board to review the department's handling of police use of force incidents. If you are elected and the item comes before you, how would you vote? And do you believe the current internal review process is adequate or inadequate and additional oversight necessary?
Can I have more than a minute? Obviously, you know where I'm going to go with this. The civilian review board is not needed by any way, shape or form. Twenty-five-year veteran of the Meriden Police Department, I can promise you this and hold my hand up that if I saw any type of brutality occurring, it would be stopped. Maybe before my time, this is not a national crisis we have in Meriden. Did Seattle have a problem? Maybe. Obviously, most likely Minnesota. Of course they did. We don't have this here. We're a small town. We have a great leadership and Chief Rizzato that everybody wanted. The guy is compassionate. He shows up, he talks to everybody. He does not allow, you know, anything to slide by him. He's a great person. And he's our leader and he has built a foundation around him that will not allow people to slip. Body cameras, body cameras, body cameras. If you want to see what's going on, come down to PD and request a body camera. That'll tell you everything. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for sticking with a minute. Over to Pedro.
Okay, all right. Um, I know, um, the chief, Captain Glenn, I call him Captain Glenn, physically Glenn, because when I do the Latino Expo, we have an open communication and, um, police are, are, are right hand. Is having trust with the police and the police having trust with the, with the residents. Because, um, back in the days, we used to have Walter, probably somebody might remember him, Walter, he used to drive with a, with a, with a little motorcycle, uh, inspecting the place in Maryland and stuff like that. Is having the trust with the police and, and, and making sure that, that, that citizens don't step out of line and police don't step out of line and, and I, I think putting a committee together was, is not trusting the, the police, but, but, um, if, if we all agree to come together and have meetings together with the police station and make sure that, that everything runs smoothly, I don't see no problem with it. Uh, I wish I had more time.
And then over to Bruce.
Presenting process for abusive, abusive, of abusive, abusive, of the abusive defendants of our complainants is through the Internal Affairs Department of the Police Department. During our, during our discussions on the committee reviewing a civilian review board, we, I determined that the, that the, that the process that's defined in the Internal Affairs Department handbook is a completely fair, fair process that gives fair legitimacy to complainants complaints. The one thing that it doesn't do is have transparency. Much of the process is, is, is not obtainable to the public. That's why I'm going to vote in favor of this community resource review board. Because what it does is it reviews the process. It doesn't interfere with the investigation. It just reviews the process to make sure that it's being properly followed and gives the transparency that the process should have. Thank you.
And then over to Dan.
As a civilian review board, I've been on every virtual meeting. I thought it was the most asinine thing that ever hit our police department in the city of Maryland. Knowing there's no racial tension, there's no problems with our police officers. And let just let me give you a little case in point. Chief Rizzato came here in one year. He was just voted out of one hundred and sixty nine municipalities in the state of Connecticut as a distinguished police chief. This was by the commissioners in the state of Connecticut. That's an honor above and beyond. But again, I talked to a couple of the police chiefs I spoke, speak to, and they tell me that they have a commission and our public safety is a commission. They handle majority of the complaints. They are the ones will initiate things, but they let the police chief do their job. If in the city of Meriden, let the police chief do his job.
And then over to Ernestine.
The problem is, it's not that the police department isn't doing their job because I love the chief we got now because you know, I didn't like the one we had before. And I still don't like him, but I love Chief Rosario. He's doing an excellent job. But it goes back to what Bruce Fontanella said. It's about transparency. The people are saying they want this. I know what you say. I know what I say, but the people are saying it's not where they can see what's going on. How does this process work? If a complaint does come in, can we see it through two different sets of eyes? Not only the police review board, because people don't trust the police and it ain't just Meriden. It, it's, it's, I live in Meriden. I like the police, but unfortunately, our governor just put some things in process and people think every town is, is having issues like this. So they say we supposed to have a review board. Federal government said we should have had one. We got to follow the law.
And then over to Chad.
Thank you for this question. So as I, you know, I was asked this question the other day by, by Mike and I know that it was in the newspaper, I think it was this morning and my, my position hasn't changed. I'm truly genuinely on the fence about this because I did in a previous job work as a public safety dispatcher. I worked side by side with police officers and I understand, I, I don't understand like a police officer does, let me tell you that, but I know what it is that, you know, they're going to every single day, the calls that come in and not knowing exactly what's going to happen, you know, minute from minute. But I do, you know, like other people here are saying, Councilor Fontanella and Ernestine as well. You know, there are so many calls in every public meeting for more transparency in this city. And, you know, transparency for us as city counselors, transparency for every department within, within the city. So I appreciate that we have a little bit more time to think about it and have these conversations with police leadership and police officers to get their side, but there are calls for more transparency. Thank you.
All right, and with that, we're up on over, actually beyond a half an hour now. So to be respectful of everyone's times, then we'll move into the closing statements. And according to the order that we're in, I believe we start off with Pedro.
Well, it's been an honor to be here and participate in, in something brand new for me. Something that I'm looking forward to serve the people of Meriden in every way I can and as, as, as a resident of Meriden, I, I, I have an open door and conversation with the fire department. We are friends from the fire department, police station. I know so many people there. The Meriden, the city hall, uh, all the, the councillors are running, some of them I know. And it's, it's going to, it's going to be a challenge for me, but I just hope that, that people will give me the opportunity to serve them and I will serve them with honesty, with, with transparency and always communicate with a big open door to look at all the issues that Meriden is facing for the future, for now and for the future. Thanks a lot for having me here and it's a pleasure and God bless.
All right, and then over to Bruce.
I, I use the introductory session to try to explain what I'm looking for in the next four years. I'm going to use this section to explain a little bit who I am. I was raised my entire life in Meriden. I've made my living in Meriden for the, for the, for the, for the working years of my life. I went to a local high school and grammar school and middle school. I'm a Moline High School graduate and also attended Dickinson College in Southern Connecticut and the University of Connecticut School of Law Night Division. I've worked as a, after college, I worked as a waiter and bus, bus boy at Jacoby's Restaurant. Then I taught school at Maloney High School and Wilcox Technical School, and then I practiced law for the last forty-one years in Meriden, in a, in a Meriden office. I, I welcome your support and I hope that you vote me in for another four years on the city council. So I can represent your interests and give fair consideration to the issues that come before the council. Thank you.
All right, and then over to Dan.
I do believe that I am a best fit for the council. First of all, I attend many, many meetings. I have found myself finding more and more that's going wrong with the city of Meriden. I have been on the cemetery committee, been on American Disabilities and I'm now on the Park and Transit Commission. I think people will understand one thing. I am here. I will answer your calls. One of the things that's the very most important thing, being on that council, I have no sides to pick to. I am not an educator. I'm not with any nonprofits. I'm not in any city government. I am for people. Myself, I'm included because I pay taxes. But as I, again, I said, my seniors are my goal to get something done for them. But again, people have to realize something. We need the economic growth in Meriden. And hopefully, again, we put something in perspective that people will vote for me and I will. Thank you.
Hi, um, what I'm going to say is this. First of all, I want to clear something up. I am not racist, as Kariotti just said. I love Meriden. I love the children. I love the seniors. I love the fire and the police department. On, I would like a seat at the table. First of all, I think the fire department needs a new truck. And the police department needs some money to hire some more people. But I also want to bring in the youth, bring in a youth advisory board. That's how I got introduced to politics. Somebody came in and said, we're going to have a youth advisory board. What is that? Well, we're going to teach you how politics really runs so that when you get a chance to run the city, you'll know what you're doing. You won't come in blind. I also want to give the seniors a bigger place. I want to gut those buildings that we got. Clean it out, build it up, turn that factory into a senior citizen building and let them have it. They deserve it. They earned it.
All right, then Chad.
First off, I'd like to thank the Record Journal for having us tonight. It's great to be able to, you know, express our, our views and our ideas for this city. You know, I just want to say in closing, you know, I was born and raised in Meriden. I'm fourth generation Meriden. My family, you know, is part of the building of this community. You know, I chose to, to stay here, to work here. I work every single day as an educator. My top priority is making sure that the children in this city are turning out to be the best that they can. I'm not sure why that's a negative in, in some people's book, but I think, you know, making my life's work, making this city better is an incredibly, you know, honorable thing to do. I think, you know, other than what the naysayers say, you know, I'm part of a generation that we want to keep in this city. We want to make sure that younger people have a voice and younger people see a future in this city. And I can give a voice to those people and give a voice that's a little bit different from, I think, some of the other candidates. And I just ask for your support on November second. Thank you very much.
All right, and then last but not least, over to Ray.
Thank you. Again, like I said, born and raised here in Meriden. Been here literally my whole life. I've seen a lot of ups and downs, a lot of changes. I am a police officer. I keep saying that, but I'm the guy that has never become a boss. I never wanted to be that part of it. I've been in the trenches trying to help as many people as I can. People don't know this, but my family is instrumental in building Falcon Field, the BMX park. I was instrumental in putting the skate park together. We have been, we have a lifelong history of Meriden. I'm still here. I worked hard to get on the Board of Education. I believe in it. I believe in Meriden. I believe in the people here. I love being here. I'm tired of everybody saying I support the police. They're just cheap words. Show it. That's all I can say. Our children are our future. Our seniors are our history. Let's not forget that. Thank you.
All right, and that brings us to the end. Now, I want to thank all of the candidates for taking the time out of the night to be here tonight. Whenever voters have a chance to hear direct from the candidate, that goes a long way in helping them make informed decisions at the polls. So once again, thanks everyone for taking the time to be here and have a good night.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.